The work station of Rigga meeting up in San Francisco, please come to our, it's Monday, March nineteenth.
Bill Sprague, Father Henry, thank you for this time to serve God, we appreciate the opportunity of staying before you and before your people in this act of service. God remind us of why we're here, remind us, God, that our only purpose is to give you glory, and we do that through the humility that we show when we serve your people. Now, God, even in the midst of recessions and things that seem to be oppressing to us, God remind us that this too shall pass, that leadership is what we need to take us through into the next place that you have destined for us. Bless this city, bless the people who represent this city, bless those who live in this city, bless those who depend on this city. We thank you now, we appreciate you for this opportunity, this privilege, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you have a briefing there, thank you?
Uh, don't have a briefing, but this president would like to pull an item from the agenda, that's item thirty-seven. And that's the only thing we have at this point. We will have a briefing, I believe, next week on several contracts related to wastewater programs.
Can I ask you anything about the opening of the meeting?
Oh, my briefings. Um, we can attend for Monday if you like, because it's off meeting week, so we can do it Monday.
Okay. Okay. All right, let me check out. So, I imagine that you'd like to get into this morning. Thirty-two.
Thirty-four. Thank you.
All right, is it nineteen?
Nineteen, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-nine.
Okay, I'll come back to you in ten, but we'll take out one more thing. Captain, where?
Uh, yes, six, and seven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen.
That's all. Okay, Captain, one more. Six, thirty-five, thirty-four. That's all. Okay, Captain, one more. Six, thirty-five, thirty-four. Thirty-one. That's all. Okay, Captain, one more. Thirty. Six, thirty-five, thirty-four. Okay. Number six.
this grant is, and what Harrison Manufacturing, what they do?
Um, a number of these listed here are from our Small Business Development Program, or our Storefront Improvement Plan Program. These are funds that are made available to small businesses for small business development programs, for equipment, um, things like that inside, and then the store funds for store effects or improvements. Uh, Mike Davis will be able to tell you specifically what these companies are using the funds for, but they are matching dollars, depends on their location, as to the maximum amount that they can get, fifteen thousand dollars if they're in CCBG, other, Tiberia, Lord Library Company, and ten thousand if they're not. They also can get a hundred percent grant if it's technology involved, so it just depends on location, depends on what you're using money for, as to the length of the grant. But, uh, Mike, he's talking about this one in particular, Harrison Manufacturing.
If I could just say, real quickly, I've been a big supporter of this grant program, I think it's got a great, just small business opportunity, I wish more people used it, knew about it, but I have been getting a few phone calls lately from different folks that, some of which have been successful, some of whom haven't, and, you know, I just want to make sure, I'd like to know a little bit, just generally speaking, about the process for selection, and then specifically about these ones, why they were selected, and what it was, that was attractive about them, because I'd like to be to let anyone know that applies to this, if they're denied, or if they don't get a response back, why it is that they don't qualify, or what it is that they need to make sure they put an application in order to be successful.
And that's fair, and everybody should get a response back, everybody probably won't get one back that will warrant money, because there's a limited amount of money, and everyone should know what the deficiency was in the application, if there was a deficiency. Um, sometimes it just simply went out of money, and, but again, that's fair, Mike, to the process and, um...
Mike Davis also gave a number of examples. Uh, the program is a first come, first served basis, we have a number of avenues at which we're able to get the word out, one word of mouth, paid network, we attend different workshops, and provide information pertaining to our grant program. The application comes in, is reviewed by the selected committee, scored, in the event that it scored a hundred percent, everybody's about a hundred percent, is its score, and if it's in your area, as the American state, it's qualified for up to fifteen thousand dollars. If not, then it's ten thousand, a dollar grant. After going through that process, a recommendation letter will be sent out to the applicant, letting them know that you can, you are eligible for said amount, and then it's gone through the process before we receive the signature, and brought before council. A lot of times what happens is that the applicant either doesn't have the matching money to initially put upfront, or the application itself is incomplete, so that extends the timeline, and even on that process, we have applications that are coming in, so it's a very popular program, as the emergency stated, and we have a waiting list, typically the Small Business Development Grant runs out fastest, and we've left with the Storefront Improvement Grant in trying to extend funds for that type of program.
Hello, President. Yes? Uh, where does the money come from? In other words, are we getting grants from, are we getting federal money, or is this coming out of the general fund? How do we...
This is a community development block grant, it's federal money, and it's one way that we use our community development block grant. It's really a fairly novel, it's been written up as a best practice with the US Conference of Nations, and it's the only such program in the state that you like to see what you do.
And as it relates to Harrison Manufacturing, what are they operating?
Harrison Manufacturing is purchasing operational equipment, computers, and/or additional items needed to provide the services that they typically provide. They are tier-two, provide products to Nissan, eventually Toyota.
Okay. Captain, yes, sir. Okay. Captain, also, Captain, yeah, my question, if you could just tell us about HAPAC, creative, and what their fund may be used for?
HAPAC is a local movie company that is instrumental in creating movies for the local being, they're purchasing cameras, and things that they need to enhance what they are doing.
Bill, in this grant, is this going to the storefront side, outside, or the operational equipment, they're purchasing cameras? So, they're actually, so we're actually helping facilitate the purchase of additional cameras?
Correct. Which would enhance their capabilities to do additional movies.
And do they provide business plans and things like that to us for approval, or how does that work?
Correct. The whole application, it consists of a business plan, quotes, as well as lease agreements with whoever they have a lease agreement with, the thing that...
Yes, sir.
Privilege prices.
All right. Did they have anything to do with the hair?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, number twelve, Captain, where?
Same question, just tell us a little bit about the produce market while they were selected.
Produce market, once again, is a first come, first served basis. They provide, to my understanding, fresh produce located right in the old piece, uh, which is on Bailey Avenue, it's a part of McCall and Doffies property, and they provide fresh produce, they're purchasing freezers and refrigerators and things that they do.
So, they're purchasing equipment?
Correct.
What do they have currently?
They have some equipment, but they need additional equipment, so this is a lot of money, purchase additional.
This will help them expand potentially, or to take on more?
Well, they purchased, or they entered a lease agreement with the owner to create this particular business, and they submitted an application with us, and seek in doing that, and being able to purchase part of the equipment through our grant program, and the other part, they're using their own money. If they're not currently open, they're open now.
Okay, thirteen.
Okay, J Food Mart, what are they using this money for? What, I'm assuming this is a convenience store?
Correct. This is a storefront improvement grant. Are you familiar with the front of Metro Center, that's a gas station across from the engine bank, they're enhancing the facade, purchasing additional operational equipment as well. So, that's going to enhance that entryway into the Metro Center.
So, like, this is a perfect example, maybe, there are, you know, hundreds of convenience stores in the city, so, you know, I'm assuming most convenience stores have not applied to this, but assuming that several have, what would make this one more likely to be selected than another?
First come, first served basis, they provide us the application, go through the process. We have Big Sex and our business outreach person who's going out visiting a number of businesses, telling them about the program as well, so, and he's visiting a number of convenience stores and providing them applications.
But you mentioned the metro center area, is part of it the fact that this is an area that, in your estimation, is the head of economic development, needs to have a better look and feel, and so therefore where you're able to provide facade renovations?
Right.
You wouldn't like that money to be spent in those areas, or how does that work?
Well, I think Mr. Davis's personal preference wouldn't come into the picture, as he said, is first come, first served, and so, if this area, if this was down the street or across town, then the evidence of convenience stores across town would take advantage of it. Uh, we have to make it first come, first served, because if we start giving personal preferences, then that's probably too arbitrary, Priest's will hug everybody else, and so, we're doing it on first come, first served basis, and trying to get the word out, and it's a popular program, anywhere from known, well-known restaurants, to now we have movie makers and secondary suppliers for Nissan, so, I mean, I don't think anybody in the state can point to that kind of outreach and access to the business community, or having them access resources that they need to expand, particularly going this, these economic times.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, we often talk about, there's not enough focus on Jackson's business community, and, I mean, just looking at these right here, the diversity of businesses, and the things that they are doing, to me demonstrates a little different story than what we often read about, and so, I think we need to showcase this more and more.
We will, and one of the things that came out of the White House Business Council meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago, was the need to communicate to our local businesses, things that are going on, and as a result of that, we're developing a business development notes, communicate, that will speak to these awards, as well as permits that have been issued, ripper cuttings and things like that, just let people know what's going on in the city. So, we will hopefully be getting that out this week.
What about those reports about new businesses that are opening? We had gotten some of those a little while back, and I don't think I've seen one in a while, I'd like to know the statistics on that.
Uh, that'll be in the business notes, in fact, we were doing it quarterly semi-annual basis, but what I intend to do is on a monthly basis, so these are the programs that were issued, and these are the type businesses that were affected or capable of existence.
If we might could get some data, even, you know, by looking down by the ward, how many businesses opened up, you know, year twenty-twelve, something like that, that'd be really good, too.
Well, we certainly can work on that as well, these business notes will be, not by award, but business development notes, but by just bullets, I don't want to give them over page, that people can look at, that will come out, you know, every other week or something like that, and let people know what's going on. We may try monthly, but certainly no less than monthly to let people know what's going on, although we have the bullets that this program has.
Uh, Mr. Davis, what do they play, eleven and thirteen?
One is a storefront improvement grant, and the other one is a small business development grant. Small business development grant in the state is for operational equipment, they'll be using that to purchase operational equipment on the inside. The outside, the facade piece, will be used to enhance the frontal facade signage of the building.
So, the question can be, one, then it can be, or both, correct?
Correct, up to, in this area, earth removal is up to fifteen thousand, so they'll have to look at an amount they want allocated for the small business development piece, as well as the storefront piece, and that total cannot exceed fifteen thousand, or whatever the score is based upon selection.
Grant?
Correct, the total, yes.
Total, and I do, and do you put you down? Okay, thank you.
I want to ask about, what percentage of these applicants, just off the top of your head, would you have funded? I mean, this is a handful here, what would you say that your pool wants to be that?
I don't think, I'm sorry.
Is it a large number, or?
See, I would say, Robert, close to fifty application a year, so, power that, and power the award, possibly twenty-five to thirty, I have funds to award twenty-five.
And while you say that they are, it's first come, first served, you do scrutinize the applicants completely, so that just because they put their application in, that means they are approved, right?
Correct, correct. They have to, I'd say, there are certain factors typically that we focus out, one being not having the funding money, or the seed money to make the initial purchases, because this is a reimbursement grant, we don't provide the funds upfront, they have to show us they have the money to make the additional, the initial purchases, and after they've figured that, they move reimbursement based upon documentation they provide back to, one being a council check, showing that they've made those purchases, we go out and verify that that item, in fact, is located in that particular business, and then we're able to proceed to make the reimbursement.
You know, when we did the tax abatements several months back, I voted against them for the very reason that I didn't think we had enough information, also, the message that I heard is, we fund, we, they were approved because they've always been approved, and many cities really don't give these away, except to startup businesses, they don't just continually give these corporation tax abatements, unless there's a huge expansion or something like that. So, I really want us to look at that, because in that, in that round, we, there was quite a number.
Um, I'm not sure that we give them because we've done them before, in the past, I think the conversation was that if these businesses, these businesses have applied for abatements in the past, received them, but they also have made additional improvements, and it's those additional improvements that they receive the payment on. Also, under our state law, we can give up to ten years, it's five years, the initial abatement period, and then an extension for another five years, and so, that's, that would be a case where they receive an abatement, and then you have an extension, but it's not automatic, it should be automatic.
In some of them, a couple of them, it was clear that they were expanded, they were expanded, but in some others, it just wasn't included, but, thank you.
Okay. Okay, what number on that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And I wondered that one, too, I don't quite understand it, somebody else had already phoned it.
Yeah, I think I did, if we could just get an explanation of what this partnership with Bank Plus is, and what exactly it means for City Jackson.
On iron, we use that developer, the office housing, community development. The City of Jackson is in the process with approval to submit a grant application to Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas through partnering with Bank Plus. This is an annual competition, the city attempted to get funded last year, and was not successful, so this time they're resubmitting. We will be partnering with Bank Plus, and will be asking up to five hundred thousand dollars for homeowner rehab activities, and we hope that we'll be successful with this funding this time around. And then, how, can I ask a question? How would it be administered, and how would you make applications? The same way that we do currently with our housing rehab program in the state, we take applications, this time around, we received a total of about four hundred applications, citywide, where applicants were applying for rehab funding, and currently in the process of reviewing those applications, and getting cost estimates on how we want to prepare those units, and right now, we only do the emergency repairs, so we have an application process, we take those applications, review them, write them, and then we move forward to provide the services to those units.
Uh, thank you. Here, no, I, I was just, we've also had federal money for this, right?
Absolutely, and we, with partnering, leveraging CCBG funds, with these funds, we can impact a large number of units.
I mean, what if it's that, to not alone, we might create it back, right?
This is a grant.
A grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm picturing the Federal Home Loan Bank, the other...
Disagree, disagree.
Great, okay, okay. Go, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, is, these grants contingent on homeowners aging, or...
Kind of, our program, we give, in our evaluation process, we do look at ranking ultimately individuals who are sixty-two and older, and they're ranking, allowing them to get more points than if you're younger than sixty-two.
So, we have to partner with the local bank to get this?
Yes, sir. We have to get our application into Federal Home Loan Bank by the twenty-sixth, and that's what happened last year, they got it to Federal Home Loan Bank, they asked additional information, they have to punch the button in order for the application to go to, we have to give it to Bank Plus, they have to submit to Federal Home Loan Bank. They have to submit to Federal Home Loan Bank.
Why didn't we choose Bank Plus?
Well, one of the reasons is because the partnership had already been established on resubmission, and generally, in the grant community, a resubmission, generally, the success rate is much higher. And that partnership was already there.